All right, we are live. You take a motion to go on open.
I will make a motion to go into open session. I'll sign it in.
We got first and second. All in favor of going open?
Aye.
Open session.
Aye.
Any opposed? We are in open session. Welcome back. Six A, discuss with possible action, potential EMS service contract with the village of Le Myra. I'm gonna make a motion to give our city administrator Stephanie, Mayville City Administrator, also along with Julie and Devon from Mayville EMS, to have negotiations regarding the EMS service contract with the village of Le Myra.
I'll second it.
Second by Henkel. Do you want to take a roll on this?
Sure.
Thank you.
Other person Newman?
Aye.
Other person Henkel?
Aye.
Other person Smith?
Aye.
Other person Lee Now?
Aye.
Other person Olson?
Aye.
Dick H. Baker?
Aye.
There we go. Motion carries.
Thank you. And then six B, we did discuss, and do we have possible action, potential EMS services contract with other surrounding communities? No. No. Everyone's gonna leave that, we just drop that.
Well, that was the other discussion. So we need a motion to allow Julie, Devon, and myself to negotiate with other surrounding communities.
All the same, the same motion I made.
Same, yeah.
There we go, thank you. So, discuss with possible action, potential EMS services contract in other surrounding communities. As I said in the last motion, I'm gonna give a motion to give the administrator Stephanie from Mayville, and along with Julie and Devon from Mayville EMS, that they can negotiate service contracts to other surrounding communities.
I'll second that.
You take a roll.
Other person Newman?
Aye.
Other person Olson?
Aye.
Other person Lee Now?
Aye.
Other person Henkel?
Aye.
Other person Smith?
Aye.
Other person Baker?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Number seven.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Mr. Smith, and I second that. Adjourned seven.
Seven, ten according to that.
Take your roll.
All in favor?
Aye.
There you go, thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Me?
Me.
Or you?
Good.
I'd like to call the order, the City of Mayville Public Safety Committee meeting at seven ten. Please take their roll.
Other person Baker?
Here.
Other person Olson?
Here.
Other person Newman?
Here.
We have a forum.
Item two, approval of minutes of the August twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-five Public Safety Committee meeting.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
For which one Newman? Second by Olson. All in all, the favors say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Any citizen comments? Any none? Discuss with possible action, monthly police department report to the Public Safety Committee.
Hello again. For the last couple of month, let's say month, we've been quite busy. Our traffic grant that we talked about last year, fourteen thousand dollars was the maximum they would offer, is up, and we are done with it. We submitted today a total of eleven thousand three hundred seventy-nine dollars in overtime wages to the county, which they will reimburse the city. It comes from the state, the county is the, they're organizing it for the other agencies, and we'll get that reimbursed within the next couple of weeks. And then we are also in agreement in completing the next week for the upcoming twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six traffic grant schedule, and it looks like it's gonna be about the same as it was for this past year, but I haven't seen the numbers yet, so I'll keep you updated on that. Calls for service since the last committee meeting of August twenty-fifth was, is four hundred and forty-eight. Comes right up to about fourteen calls a day that we handle. So we've been, it's pretty, it's on par for the past couple of years. We've had several community events that the first department's been involved in, most recently Audubon Days, which went very well from a public safety standpoint. We had D-Cert help us out, I would like to thank them personally for helping us, they do every year, and it's very helpful, also the Horicon Police Department helped, and the Sheriff's Department sent a community service officer to assist us, and always the city crew. They've always been very good with giving signs out, helping us out, so we appreciate that. Without all that stuff happening in the background, and the things that the city provides, Audubon Days would be pretty difficult, so we're pretty good first, and it's my twenty-fifth one that we did this year.
I thought you were rolling twenty-five, no?
Well.
Not as cheap. See what Audubon is.
It feels like it's something.
Yeah.
It's actually been more than that, I was, I could have a couple of years before, so it's closer to twenty-seven or twenty-eight.
I expect you to.
Next. Couple of public safety announcements, want to talk about the school traffic. There's some two-hour parking signs, and there's some confusion about parking at the high school when parents pick up their kids. The parking signs say there's, it's only ten-minute parking from, I believe it's seven-thirty to three-thirty. As long as parents or guardians or grandparents are sitting in their vehicles actively waiting for their student, they're not violating that parking, if it takes more than ten minutes. So I just want to make that clear, there's been a number of questions about that. As far as enable early learning goes, the old elementary school, Brickyard Lane is a one-way street, apparently there's been some confusion about that recently. And I just remind parents, teachers, everybody that Brickyard Lane is a one-way street. And also with the schools we've been involved with that are currently active, and have a number of dates in place for private schools and the public schools where we are doing lockdown drills, safety drills, relocation drills, we're actively involved with that. There's some new administration of high school, and they're really putting effort into that, and we've been there a couple of times this past week, and we continue to partner and work with them. Our detective spends, right now he's spending a couple hours a day there, just with certain things and that, and so we've been very involved with the schools, and working with them, trying to keep everything safe and orderly, and so that we're all on the same page, and that's something that we work on and work with every single week. So that's, we've been very active with that, with the start of the school year. So, that's about it, we're, well, we've got our FirstNet cell phones, we just changed from US Cellular to FirstNet, which should give us some priority, and I'm happy to report that we were concerned about some coverage issues and that, but right now, it seems to be working well. I do also want to say, and let everybody know, that we will not be having a hunter's site in for this year in November, for two reasons. One, using high-powered rifles out there, I don't think is really a great idea anymore, just because of all the new buildings and new factories and all that, and the industrial park, we're gonna limit that. And then just, we haven't had much of a turnout with it either. It's only been five to six, maybe ten people, ten people over a two- or three-year period, so we do not, we do not plan on.
That's for rifle.
Yeah.
There isn't any rifle hunting, or is that Columbia County, I don't know.
No, that's all changed. Yeah, you can use a rifle everywhere now.
Oh, really?
Used to be you could only use a shotgun and all that. That's all changed now. Yeah, that's what I got, for right now.
So, FirstNet, who owns them?
AT&amp;T.
Okay. New name, I did know.
Yep, it's AT&amp;T, and I'm not sure if they own it, or they just provide the service, or I don't know how it fits in. Our bill should be a little bit less each month with it, it's, it's, I don't know, a little bit, but the service right now.
Thanks for your.
Thank you.
Thanks for.
Thank you.
All right, four B, monthly EMS report to the Public Safety Committee.
Okay, I'll see. Right, like you mentioned before, we are about to, I don't know where we were last year. Actually, I think Devon just ran numbers from twenty twenty.
Twenty sixteen, we doubled.
We're doubled since twenty sixteen, so we just keep getting busier, which is good for us, but not for people. We have one new applicant that we were going to hopefully do his interview in September, but it just didn't work here without a talent. So he is actually applying to be one of our training center adjunct teachers. He is also a paramedic, a local paramedic, and also works for, he's an officer for Dodge County, and M W Police Department, he's gonna be also working with them. He has his own business, so he's kind of part of the private sector, but he is going to be bringing in classes that we cannot teach, because it's higher level, so he has his interview with PFC in October. Our training for the rest of the year is gonna be with our med control, we do final skills. We are going to be, we're excited that we're finally getting a new pain med, so we are training on that, which will be hopefully helpful, so we will not have to call intercepts for pain. That would be, would be great. Two of our brings have passed DOT, and we have two more to get in. I'm currently working, or have submitted our FAP, so that's the funding that we get from the state of Wisconsin. Last year we got thirty-five thousand, that's kind of where we're projected to get again this year, so that's really nice. And I am working, if you remember, me and Chuck bought the non-state grants for our building, was it last year or the year before, that has now come out again, so we are working on that, pulling numbers together, just doing a lot of research, we don't have a lot of time, they opened it, they just opened it last week, and they're gonna close it October thirty-first already. So, we're gonna use some of the stuff that we have from the innovation grant, and hopefully work hard to get that. Any questions? Okay.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, five C, monthly fire department reports to the Public Safety Committee.
Again, Chief Henkel is at schooling, and there is no report out for this month that I was provided.
Thank you. Four D, discuss with possible recommendation, change of alcohol beverage, appointed agent for Audubon Inn, Wisconsin LLC.
They have a manager.
Was he from the past?
I believe he has worked there previously, but he has not been their appointed agent.
I've seen the name. Okay.
Obviously checks out.
Yep, background went through, signed off on by PD. All right. All record known to council now. Thank you.
We need a second for that?
Second.
Second by Newman, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, discuss with possible recommendation, ordinance one-one-five-two-dash-two-zero-two-five, ordinance to repeal and replace section one-nine-five-three-C of the municipal code of the City of Mayville, relating to mobile food vendor permits.
So, I just want to bring this to all of your attention. There have been a few requests this last year to have, like, single-day event permits. Right now, our mobile food vendors, which is your, you think of as food truck tradition, they have to get a seasonal, which goes over the summer, or an annual license. I know there was some concern that when this was initially set up, that the mobile food vendors, they did not want to jeopardize the brick-and-mortar restaurants in the city. So what I am proposing is that if there is a want for these single-event permits, that it be in conjunction with an event or a festival, not that they're just parking in a parking lot to test our business.
So, I do notice, though, that there are a lot of factories that have a vendor come in. So, what's wrong with that?
That's on private property, we wouldn't. Well, no, we do look into those. I'm not aware of any.
It's mostly around Beaver Dam and.
Oh, sure, so I don't know how their ordinance reads. You know, some people, or some municipalities do have a far more lax mobile food vendor sort of ordinance, but ours currently does not have that bandwidth for a single day. So if they wanted to show up for.
Food truck mania.
Yeah, if someone wants to start an event like that, or a business in town has a customer appreciation day, and they want to bring in a food truck to offer food, it gives them that flexibility to do so.
What about the farmer's market?
Those, that's different, they're not preparing food, they don't.
No, no, I mean if a truck wanted to come.
They would need to get a mobile food vendor permit.
When, when what we tried, if it was one-day permit?
I believe, well, we'd have to set that. So first would be to.
Repeal.
Pass it, to add it in. And then through, by the time this would get through council, it would be on the fee schedule, and I think I was putting fifty dollars in as a placeholder, because a seasonal is a hundred and twenty-five.
Take a motion.
Repeal?
Yeah.
Replace?
Your bill is replaced, for the one day. That's my motion.
I'll second that. All right, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion carries.
And then that will come to council in October for production.
Right.
All right, four, I've discussed with possible recommendations of proposed twenty twenty-six Dodge County Sheriff's Office nine-one-one joint powers agreement.
This is an annual agreement, so I think this has been the same as the last previous years.
Yep, I did not notice any change, it's not a fiscal contract, it is, it's just utilized nine-one-one.
This is a yearly thing.
Yep.
Nothing's changed.
Yes. All right, I'll make a motion.
Second.
All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item five, German.
Make that.
I'll second.
Make that motion. Aye.
All right, we'll call the Public Works Committee, October twenty-second, seven-twenty-four, nine-seven o'clock, that works. Take the roll, please.
Absolutely, other person Smith?
Here.
Other person Baker?
Here.
Other person Lee Now? We have a forum.
Okay. Approval of the minutes for August twenty-fifth.
Move to approve the minutes.
I'll second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Citizen comments, any citizen comments for Public Works? I think none, we'll go to monthly tag center report with Public Works Committee, that would be John Wild, himself.
All right.
Hi, Devon.
Hey, I'm gonna get real quick, since it's a long meeting tonight, if I seem to do, listen to me talk.
We like you.
Thank you. The programming out there, finishing up all our summer stuff, everything went really well. Coed, we're a few weeks away from Coed softball. Also last week, got to start flag football, and then we're just about finished up getting all of our winter stuff set up, so it's gonna be a really, it's gonna be a busy winter out there this year. A lot of new programming. This morning, Rachel Wagner started her first, this relationship we have, we built up with Back in Action. She did her first Silver Sneaker class this morning, so we're able to have classes on every day of the week out there, every morning, which went over really well this morning. So that, hopefully that relationship, we're gonna build up a little bit more, and have more stuff offer out there because of that. As far as buildings go, building grounds, parking lot was resealed, we had it sealed on, they finished it up on Saturday in the afternoon with the, I guess, the painting of the lines and everything, and then we also just, the gym floor got done last week, so the gym now has been re-waxed, resealed. Really had a really nice job, both the companies that we had did a really nice job for us. The last week, Monday, we had a nice surprise visit from the state of Wisconsin to check over our pool, and they're supposed to be yearly, but they are still short-staffed, they haven't been out there since twenty twenty-three. So, we, I want to take a report back in, I'll, at council meeting, I'll give everything back, but just as short of it. We thought we had lifeguarding under control, well, there's new rules again, so we don't have enough lifeguards to do it again, to actually, the new rules that they have, we have to have more lifeguards now. So we actually have an in-service at eight o'clock with the lifeguards, and actually gonna be interviewing two new lifeguards at eight-thirty this night yet, so hopefully get some, get some more lifeguards in out there to make it work, but shouldn't need any extra money, we're just gonna end up having to shut things down, and catch an angle to pull around to keep the works at money-wise. We got a couple, we did get a couple, I guess, written up for a couple of things, that's a level one, which is they just give us time to fix, which is like door closers and signage, and it's gotten so crazy out there, the new thing now is you can't, we have to have a sign out there that you can't hold your breath under the water, you know, when you have a friend, you underneath the water, you hold your breath, you only can do it, you can't do it anymore if they have signage out there, it's, you can't, you can't do that stuff anymore.
Don't mark that ball off.
No, no, it's, oh my god, no, we can't go to the pool right now, no. I'm just saying, just stuff like that, so when I get the full report back out, presented to you guys from the, let's say otherwise, everything went good, chemicals were good, we're house done, it's clean out there, everything like that, we just gotta tweak the lifeguard thing, and some few things like that, so. Other than that, that's really all I have right now. Any questions anybody have?
Real quick, Silver Sneakers, you're doing videos before, right?
Yep.
Now we're doing.
Hundred percent in-person, people, yep, the, the only reason we're doing videos is because we just only had one instructor there, and then she usually takes, slows down in the summer, she lives near our central water town, hour away, and then once we get back, she was doing Tuesday, Thursdays, and now with the other one, so we, she was just coming in Tuesdays during the summer, Thursday we're showing a video, now it's Tuesday, Thursday, she's there, Sandy or Orman, and then Monday, Wednesdays, this Rachel Wagner's there, but then we have Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, we have water classes. So.
Excited.
It is.
Yeah.
So a lot of cool stuff.
Thank you.
Okay.
For all your.
Thanks, John.
All right, thanks.
All right, four B, monthly Department of Public Works report to the Public Works Committee. There he is.
Hi, Jay. Hello, hello. All right, so the DPW report this month, we had the job transition, seems to be going pretty well so far. I've had to call you out a couple of times, but so far he's been willing to help every time, so that's a positive, and I appreciate that. We're also doing quite a bit of in-house maintenance right now, with the leaves changing colors, we're working on getting our backhouse switched over to the leak trunk, and then as well as our pool behind leaver, and we're also right now demoing chippers, so because this year we're getting a new chipper through CIP. So we went through one last week, and now next week, or next week, Monday, we will have another brand there, so just trying to test out all our options, and get the best one we can, to make it last as long as we can. If you were up at Audubon Days, you noticed, you might have noticed, the shelter had siding on it, new siding. We are working on all our shelters through our shelter maintenance project that we have through CIP. Last year, we brought it over, this year we got new roofs on all our shelters, and now we have some extra money, so now we are siding for all our shelters in-house, so keep our guys busy for quite some time. We had, obviously we had Audubon Days, we had the guys set up all the detours, whatnot, we were in Friday morning. Cleaned up, we swept up Main Street Friday morning for batteries, then night, Saturday morning we came in, and did the Main Street again, to sweep up all straw and whatnot, and then Sunday morning, a couple guys came in and set up all the detour signs. And then, just a reminder that full pickup is this weekend, and I believe there's one more after this. And then, at the end of the day-to-day, they tore down Park Square, so our Allen Street is officially wide open again. So.
Who did the roofs?
BRH, they did that earlier, well, earlier, but in the summer time, thankfully, after the trailer.
Two questions, did you get involved with that corn load dump?
I got, I got word of it, you were talking to that pine tree? Yep, I, I had someone calling me, I think it was Wednesday or something like that, about that tree.
You guys helped?
We didn't do anything with it. The pine tree on River Drive, you ever told?
No, I thought it must be corn load that was.
Oh, the corn load, yeah, we took care of that, yeah. I had one of the officers called me, and I had a guy come in and sweep it all up.
In case you haven't noticed, and I did follow it, one of the trucks from the candy factory had corn juice all over. I even called the general manager, no reply, so.
I didn't get a call from the corn juice, I got a.
No, no, it was corn juice all over Main Street, Clark, all the way through town.
People thought it was cheese melt, but it was not, it was corn juice.
Yes, there's, we also had a guy come out to pick it all up, but we kind of beat him to it, so.
Good. And then the second question is, did you ever, the halfway between the gate, the infamous gate, and the.
The Gulfport.
Yeah, and the pump on the private road, did you get those ruts?
Watch, watch, wait, we've not yet, I had noticed it last week, and so this week we'll have that recreated out.
Yeah, we have a couple of bicyclists who have trouble navigating.
Oh, I can manage.
Through there, yeah. Okay, well, good. And one last thing, somebody in my ward, I think, called the mayor, and talked to him about somebody who did some damage with their semi-load for unloading shingles and stuff.
Oh, yeah.
Did you notice how bad, I drove by and looked, it didn't seem as bad as it was described to me, but looked like a few dents for downriggers or something.
Don gone, he's gonna get in contact with Northeast when they're here to do some Patrick around town, and he's gonna see if they can either heat up that section and level it out, or we're gonna bring a torch up there and try to heat it.
Was it too heavy, or was it not cured yet?
I'm assuming it's too heavy, didn't have, probably the downriggers didn't have a board underneath them or something.
Yeah, they're supposed, underneath the downriggers, just supposed to put a.
Correct.
Four-by.
Pad, yeah.
Yeah, two-by-two pad, okay. All right, thanks.
Yes, sir.
Thanks.
Any other questions, real? No? All right, now, I guess he's gonna stay here for parks, right? Four C, monthly Parks Department report.
All right, so, tagging out the DPW, our summer guys are helping when they come, when they're in for three days a week, they're helping with the shelters, so they're doing all the little stuff like cutting the pieces while they're up there, and stuff like that, we're also still doing softball, softball field for Coed, which is gonna go for a couple more weeks, I believe. We planted roughly twenty trees around town the past two weeks, mainly where the tornado impacted, then we're from Modern Woodman. They donated fifteen, and then Fox Ten gave us a couple more too, since they're at their end-of-the-year sale, and they wanted to get rid of them. So if you look down Main Street, we planted, I think, four, we planted four over at May Park, we planted fives up at Lions Point Park, and then we put a couple in Ray Lane, so they're all over town, but we want to have majority in the tornado area. Obviously helped with prepping Audubon Days, getting little things done, like bringing extra picnic tables there, then wire wheels that are all around the band stage, we haul them up for them. We actually, I had a complaint about the fountain not working by the Legion, so I had, I made sure that that was working for Audubon, so we got that going, and with it being fall, the pavilion is starting to ramp up for rentals, so I think every weekend from here till the end of October, into November, we have a party or a party of some sort of a pavilion. So, really good little source of revenue for the end of the year here. Other than that, we just have fuzzy, doing fuzzy things, cutting grass, trimming trees, and planting these trees, pretty much buying salt when we're not around, so that's what I have for the parks.
I think this, I don't know if this parks are public works, but I want to thank you for attending to the vision problem on River Drive and Y going out of town, where you, when you came, when you couldn't see, it stopped, it stops, and you pull almost in the intersection to see.
Oh, yeah.
And you got, somebody, I think it was you, took the, took the branches down?
Yeah.
You had a nice surprise.
We, when we demoed one of the chippers last week, we wanted to clarify the ropes a little bit, so we cut down some bigger things to. Got to test it out.
Yeah. All right, any other questions, for? All right, thanks.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, Jay.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, item number five. I have a motion to adjourn.
So make.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We're adjourned.
Is up.
I'd like to call the order, the City of Mayville Finance Committee meeting September twenty-second, twenty twenty-five, could you take the roll?
Absolutely, other person Newman?
Here.
Other person Smith?
Here.
Other person Henkel? Here, we have a forum.
Item two, approval of minutes on August twenty-fifth. Number two, approval of minutes on August twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-five, Finance Committee meeting.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Henkel first, Smith second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Two B, approval of minutes, number eight, twenty-twenty-five, Special Finance Committee meeting.
I'll make the motion too.
I'll second it.
Smith first, Henkel second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Carry it. Three, citizens' comments. Any citizens' comments on any of the following actions below? Seeing none, we're gonna go discuss with that with uh possible action. Four A, discuss possible recommendation land management plan application fee, tell me more.
Alright, so this is coming to because our code, uh, we had found, uh, Stephanie had founded for me, we allow for natural lawns in the city and it requires a. You fill out the application with the clerk and we take it to plan commission, there is no application in place. So I have drafted that, that is gonna be a plan commission this month, but in addition with any application, we need a fee associated. Uh, so it is something that is discussed and negotiated by plan commission. Um, in the event it won't get approved, they can actually take it to zoning Board of Appeals. So, you know, and it's. There, the code was in the. Packet as well as the uh, the proposed application I'm taking to the plan commission. So it does lay out pretty carefully, you know, where. The terrace has to be invasive control, um, mowing schedule, so it's not just a free-for-all. Uh, but uh, it's completely up to you guys where you want to price the staff. And then annually I'd probably just put it on the fee schedule.
We did have this informally before because we had a couple of people. We did have this before, but it was informally, they just didn't have to have a formal plan. A couple of people had, wanted to have a natural, that was when that was invoked, um, Legus had one I think over there across the middle school, a couple of ones. So we just handled it like internally.
I'm not sure how long it's been in code but, you know, it popped up, so no way to address it.
So, yeah, well, some, the recent, recent activity kind of necessitated.
Correct.
Something like this.
Yes.
But I think it's a good idea that I, 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 I would, do you have any suggestions for a fee?
I looked around at other communities and none of them seemed to go through a process like this so I have no comparables.
Hundred and twenty.
Hundred fifty.
So.
And it, it would be a one-time fee, it's not like a, a chicken or a dog first permit that you gotta do it every year.
Yeah, five hundred.
Well, that sounds like a penalty, I, I don't, I think you ought to make it reasonable if somebody wants to do. Natural foliage or natural plants and they're within reason.
And they have to have a long schedule and so on, so.
So I looked at that and I'm talking about the ones that we used to have, we're all in good, you know, with a couple of guys who had bees too and. You just said, so we can do this and make it something that, so that nobody wants to do it, I mean, you can do that, you can make it so, so hard. That nobody wants to try and have a natural lawn, I don't know, you do what you want.
And then like I said, there's a plan associated, so if we would find we're out of compliance and we get finished, I mean, go through whatever the renovation process is.
We could change our sign and says, this used to be the prettiest town in Dodge County.
How long has that process been in place?
I do not know how long this has been part of our code, uh, but it, it is in our code and we are.
Cause I thought part of our. I thought part of our code also said that um. You know, the front of your lawn has to be like properly groomed and just that.
Yep, I do believe this. Does lay out. Where they can have it.
Yeah. I have a couple of naturalists on Bridge Street.
Yep, they have to notify adjacent property owners within two hundred feet who have a right to file objections. So this can go, they have to maintain the terrace area, the sidewalk. And the streets or a force, four-foot strip adjacent to the street where no sidewalk exists. Um. And additionally, they'll mow at least a three-foot strip adjacent to neighboring property lines unless a written waiver from their owners. And that's already existed in code.
We used to have it, so you, used to, I mean, the weed ordinance used to be, you could do what you want in the backyard but in the front yard, it's gotta be a lawn. But then we had people who said. Natural uh. Grass and, you know.
We just need a fee number.
Yeah.
Well, I think you, you can also just pass it as the way she has it written, you can have a fee discussion. At the council level.
Correct.
Right.
Or the clerk can.
Or you want him to.
Look further to see what others.
Yeah, I am happy to try to dig further and bring it as part of the discussion when we do the fee schedule toward the end of the year. It's not like I have anyone beating down my door to start a natural lawn in.
Right.
Autumn months.
So you get a recommendation to move it to council.
Okay.
Anyone else? Or just one?
I have a motion.
We don't have the motion, just the recommendation, correct?
Well, yeah, we can motion to move it and council can make the choice.
And two? Molly, Bob.
What's that?
Good for the. Motion?
I'll make the motion.
You second it.
So second, all in favor? Aye.
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 Any opposed? Carry it, going to the council. Uh, four, be discussed with possible recommendation, the proposed twenty-twenty-six city agreement with Mayville Chamber of Converse.
So Dawn is here from Main Street and Chamber, answering questions, this came in late last week I believe. And it appears to be the same amount that was approved last year.
Yes, somebody reached out and made peace finally, currently. So we're gonna give five thousand to both Main Street and Chamber and they're both gonna continue like they used to with here in office and all that, is that what we're doing?
Um, we're, the Main Street one is five thousand and then. Chamber is ten thousand.
Oh, Chamber, ten thousand. It's the other way around?
It's the other way around.
Oh, I'm sorry, I've got the wrong numbers on them, ten thousand Main Street.
Okay, and this is up from nothing for the Chamber because they were from a foreign place, but now it's, now we're making peace, right? Is that right?
Yes.
I have no idea what those are.
Yeah, right. Are you happy with this? You are happy with this?
Yep.
Okay, so good, uh, so I'll make the motion to approve this.
Second it.
Good.
Anthony, the chairman? Motion?
I made the motion, I second.
Take your role.
Alright, Alder Person Smith?
Aye.
Alder Person Henkel?
Aye.
Alder Person Newman?
Aye.
It carries.
Discuss the possible recommendation of proposed twenty-twenty-six city agreement with Main Street, Mayville.
And that is the five thousand dollar one.
Right.
Ten thousand.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
First and second, take your role.
Alder Person Henkel?
Aye.
Alder Person Smith?
Aye.
Alder Person Newman?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thanks, Dawn.
Yeah.
Thank you, Dawn, this one was different, so. Thank you for your patience, Dawn, aiming out of those.
It was worth everything.
Yes. For quite the show.
Five. I'll put the fifth up there.
Not difficult, you're always looking.
Alright, thanks Andy for running today.
No worries.
Four D, discuss the possible recommendation of proposed twenty-twenty-six city agreement with Graceland Cemetery. Any history, a little quick, maybe?
This is, um, they originally asked for the twenty-one thousand last year.
Twenty-one or twenty-four? No.
Yeah, they got involved and, um, we, we asked them if they could lower that last year to nineteen thousand and then we went. Agreed that we would pay them the original amount that they requested, the twenty-one thousand and this year.
Take a motion.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Absolutely. What is the MO? What is the MO? It's twenty-one thousand this year, almost nineteen last year. Alright, there it is, okay.
So I made the motion, Bob Smith was second, let's take your role.
Alder Person Newman?
Aye.
Alder Person Smith?
Aye.
Alder Person Henkel?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Discuss with possible recommendation of proposed twenty-twenty-six city agreement with the Dodge County Humane Society.
So we do not have a physical contract from them yet. Uh, but if I am remembering our email correctly, the numbers are staying the same for twenty-twenty-five, so in your packet I just gave you a copy of the twenty-twenty-five executed contract. Last year we opted for the, I believe it was four thousand for twenty animals, any additional animals over and above were three hundred and fifty each. And that was the third of the four options they provided.
They meet this week or next week, the board does, and they'll have the contracts all up for that, but I did talk to. Kenzie Drinkwitz, she said the rates will be the same for next year as the next.
And how old are we, where do we end up?
We're rated and rated by fifteen animals right now, so we're.
We were at twenty, right?
Yeah, twenty is the total then.
There was some big dog run or anything or, right?
No.
Okay.
So it's working on both of the numbers.
I'll say that for Facebook when people post it.
Every animal we get can put on Facebook and that, generally takes, and we'll wait a little while before we take it.
So is there, we don't have a contract, but is it, what is in order here?
Same as.
Approval.
Same as last year.
Alright, I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Smith first, Henkel second, take your role.
Alder Person Smith?
Aye.
Alder Person Henkel?
Aye.
Alder Person Newman?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Four F. Discuss the possible recommendation resolution sixty-twelve, twenty-twenty-five. Resolution approving the issuance of the complimentary take center passes to the City of Mayville taxpayers.
Um, in prior years you will have approved, uh, via resolution to issue four passes to the take center. Um, and after last year's discussions, I am bringing it back to see if you want to resume that.
Yes, there was some miscommunication last time and. I, and now that it's straightened out, I will make the motion to approve it.
Second, Smith, first, wait, second, take your role.
Alder Person Smith?
Aye.
Alder Person Newman?
Aye.
Alder Person Henkel?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Four G, discuss with possible action wetland delineation expenses.
And that ain't helping anymore.
Oh, God. Alright, so what this involves is wetland delineation of done for the compost site on Slay Road. Basically for self-property line of that, just to kind of clarify where DPW can push compost and fill to. Um, so that wetland delineation, we found that maps in your packet. Uh, you took a look at that, their delineation, the yellow boundary you see in there? And there's a lobe that kind of goes off to the northeast. See where I'm talking, it's got T-six in it? Think that? They think they can get that lobe, I believe that's an artificial wetland, basically created. As part of the grading, wet area, so he thinks he can file with the DNR to get that area removed, so it would open up that area for. For filling for compost, um, otherwise we'd have to mark that and they'd have to stay out of that area. So basically that lobe would, could come out. If you drew a straight line across that got rid of that lobe. That would be the artificial exemption.
Right, and the cost associated with it, so.
One thousand seven hundred dollars for them to file that application. And a proposal that's required of ecological.
Jesus, it's still dragging on from two years ago when they first required us to do a delineation.
Is this the final?
This is, this just came home, we were, um.
This one we just did.
Yeah.
Oh, okay. What happened with the previous one, wasn't it for the same property or was it?
So when Jack moved his stuff, you're, you're talking about.
Right, this is the one that's actually on Slay Road, Bob, I think we did one along River and Hole?
Yeah, that's the one I was thinking about, River and Hole.
That one's all done.
That's east of this, yeah.
We have one.
Yeah, we did. There's so much.
There's money in this contract that services the DPW too.
Right.
Do you recommend, I mean, does that seem reasonable to you that?
To me it does, it's like I say, it opens that area up for DPW to use, yeah. In order, they're, they're fairly confident they can get the exemption on that.
And how long will it be good for, you have to redo it?
Uh, well, underlineations I believe are good for five years.
Right. But once this gets approved, then we could have this site for whatever, right, so we don't have to have a redoning.
Right.
Alright, I'll make a motion to approve the delineation expenses.
I'll second it.
First by Smith, second by Henkel, take your role.
Alder Person Smith?
Aye.
Alder Person Henkel?
Aye.
Alder Person Newman?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you, thank you, Dawn. Four H, discuss with possible action IT upgrade. Four H one, discuss with possible action Microsoft invoice. Tell me more.
They should have been switched, cause that's, that's our current project that we're doing right now. Start with the possible action, current spectrum phone and internet contract, we'll have to discuss that one first.
Alright, so we'll just keep them, we'll just keep this split role.
Yep.
Okay, so discuss possible action IT upgrade, discuss the possible action, current spectrum phone and internet contract. Tell me more.
Alright, well, when I was doing the budget, there was a bunch of costs on internet and phone, all with everybody in the department and I asked for a copy of the contract. And, um, looks like each department has their own agreement, contract. And it was signed by the administrator but it has to be going, it has to go through council. When, if the mayor and administrator can enter into an agreement or contract without the consent of the council, it needs to be put on here for this.
So if I can talk to that? Yeah, okay, so this stems from the IPT project that was brought before you when we hired Justin, Justin from Genesis IT. So at that time, um, you know that your internet, your IT and everything is in, wasn't disarray. And it wasn't when you were going to be hacked, but if, not if you're gonna be hacked, but when. Um, at that time, when we looked into it, you had a spectrum internet annual contract. That came, that was for annually in, in January, it was nine thousand dollars. Um, in twenty-twenty-four, in twenty-twenty-five, it came and it was thirteen thousand dollars because everything has spectrum for the internet had increased. So with Justin on board and the gentleman we're here that were, had currently handled our IT system. But Justin said that we need to be able to go month to month, not have an annual contract. But Justin said that we need to be able to go month to month, not have an annual contract. So at that time, all the departments were asked what they need for services. And so what that agreement did, and all your other, you had, you had five accounts at Spectrum. And what it did was brought everybody in to 12 different locations on one agreement with, um, Spectrum. And so what had happened, I had to do that that day, or you would have had an annual contract in place for a whole year. And then we could have pushed your IT project off for one year, because we couldn't have changed anything. As you can see by the documentation I put in your packet, um, the first one, I, I mean, you had trunking here at City Hall, that was just for your phone service that was required because, um, and Justin had talked with the mayor, first of all, we had to decide, do you do Spectrum or AT&amp;T? So it was at that time decided that we had to stay with Spectrum. The Spectrum would, would, uh, was able to incorporate the phones that you currently have. So if we were to want AT&amp;T, we had to get all new phones. So that was a decision, I assumed was made. And so now you have a single source, you have a sole, sole, sole source vendor, and I was going to bring this contract forward. However, as you can see, I, every, so you went from a regular, like a business, not a business internet, you had like a home and office internet. It couldn't support the police department. You, you know that you had numerous complaints from the police department because they couldn't download videos. So then we had to go to a business enterprise internet, so that we run like a business.
Would this be that Spectrum enterprise one?
Correct.
Okay.
So when we brought that online, you had a Spectrum enterprise, and then you had the, the other internet was also on there, so I had to file a case for every location. So every location, I talked to somebody on the phone, they sent me an email, I had to approve it to remove the previous internet. And so now, when you look at your internet bill, you get one bill, everybody comes together. Uh, we removed cable at City Hall here, you had cable that you're paying for at, to a TV that didn't even work. We removed 10 cable boxes from IP, from tag center, they had 20, we went down to 10. We, um, the cable at the police department, they agreed to it, and it was removed. Um, also, there was music at the senior center that you were paying, um, a thousand dollars a year for. Just because we took internet there to this, so now that they have a Roku TV that they can play their music with. And they have agreed that they would pay for that. They wanted it music at the senior center and senior group has agreed to pay for that portion of it. Um, the city of Park Pavilion, Justin, um, and I did report on this, has agreed he purchased and donated to the city the equipment so that we can have Wi-Fi for all the events that we're having there, the guests that come. And they can use the Roku TV out there and set up the cable. So we canceled the cable at the Park Pavilion Fire Department. Um, they had, for some reason, they had like a, uh, videos web hosting there at the fire department that we canceled. Um, their cable also, and then we also had to set up a kiosk there for the pay online. Also, at the DPW garage, they never had internet before, but in order to have that, my fate, you have to have an internet, um, capability at the DPW garage. Um, and also, they had video service there removed at the city, city garage. So every one of them, I was on the phone for numerous hours, that leads and to the next problem with AT&amp;T. They gave, sent me email and on email that the analog lines were terminating. However, it took us from April 28th to just two weeks ago, that we were able to port them numbers into into the city, into the Ring Central that we currently have. Also, at that time, I was able to take Mike Kurtz's name off of the Spectrum internet bills. And that is the work in progress that we're doing. Finally, now we got the kiosks at the DPW, at the fire department, we finally have the equipment, I mean, there's a supply chain. We weren't able to get the internet hooked up at senior center as quickly as we wanted to because of, um, the supply chain. And they finally, I think this last month, we finished that up. Um, and two weeks ago, we did the phone numbers. That leads to the next problem that you have. Um, October 1st, um, your Windows 10 will be end of life thing. You have 11 computers at City Hall here that do not support Windows 11. Um, so that is something I will be coming to you, I was, I'm thinking we'll just wait it out to the next budget cycle. I did have 30,000 in there, it was reduced to 20,000 for your IT project. But you have a lot, so what you have to do is get on a replacement schedule for your computers so that everything doesn't have to be replaced at one time. But that's what I have for the Spectrum contract, um, the next one will be the Microsoft that I can talk about. So at Microsoft, what you currently had was like a home, well, first of all, all you had was internet. And everybody else had their individual software for the computer, computer. It was like a student and home-based software. So what happens at that situation, for instance, when console has to be updated, you have to go to each individual computer and update that software, because it's not, it's not able to be networked. So that's the next step, if I'm seeing anything incorrect, Justin, please correct me, because I'm not an IT person. I just signed the contract, so we had all these locations together, you had such a hodgepodge of different people at, at different prices, so that's all I was intending to do is bring it together. Each department was responsible from there to make sure that they had the right internet, the number of phones. I know we went from eight, eight, eight phones to 13 phones at the police department. But I'm, I don't know where they ordered them, I think they worked with you, Justin, on getting the additional phones. So, I mean, every department had to be responsible for their own billing. And current, um, in the the cable fund, which was Fund 20, it was $56,000. Nobody knew. So there's your hall expenses that no, the council didn't even know about. So that's what I was trying to fix and correct. If I went about it the wrong way, I'm sorry, but it was a very, very difficult project. I should have brought it to you sooner, the contract, but these are a lot of moving parts that were happening in the back.
Ryan, how are things going over there next year with this stuff?
Um, the internet right now, we're a couple weeks into having it and it's working, it's good. And the phone system itself also is working much better than the previous phone system that we had, so.
You don't have to go to the library anymore, huh?
No.
Okay, thanks.
Well, I can't, if anybody, that was I can't believe, did you have that all written out there, Stephanie? That was a pretty long. I would, for the council and for me personally, because I'm old and slow. But I would have, rather been kept up to date a little earlier, just like you mentioned. To know, I, last time I remember, this stuff was being handled by a couple of outfits, one named The Wise Guys and one, and the stuff was all that's crap, less obsolete than it is now.
And that's why it's taking so long, because it was such a mixed up mess. It was so hodgepodge.
But it would have been nice, nice to be, it's nice, I'm glad you got the problem almost solved here, but it would have been nice to know the extent of the hornet's nest as we were going along the last couple months. I don't know. I am annoyed, maybe the, some of us, there are people here who are tech savvy, who could have maybe offered some insight into it.
I have Justin, he's perfectly capable and he did a wonderful job. I think, I bet he wishes he wouldn't have taken it on.
I'd be happy to answer any questions or fill in any blanks.
Well, no.
You give those comes to senior citizens.
We give everybody our same old prices every time.
Well, if we don't have any questions, do you have anything to share with us?
Um, it's actually been a real pleasure working with the city and getting things to the standards they ought to be at. Things were in disarray, there was risk, um, security concerns that are now buttoned up. And I think we can rest easily, knowing that, uh, we don't have to worry about compliance issues or, um, some specific threats. We do have some ways to go, uh, which we are working on, we've finished replacing your core network infrastructure hardware along with the internet connections. Um, that is like the key, uh, place to start, and now we can move on to hopefully reducing costs by consolidating the multiple servers you have running on different machines. Some of those could be virtualized or put onto a single box or maybe eliminated altogether with Microsoft 365 licenses. They, um, overlap some of the capabilities with what you're, you currently have. So we're hoping to migrate that stuff to 365, since you're purchasing those licenses anyway, we might as well use the features it has and hopefully reduce the hardware costs you have, uh, for ongoing upkeep. And then, uh, I believe all the remote sites have now been, uh, added into the mix, they all have a connection back to City Hall here. You have a citywide wireless network, so if, uh, you punched in your, um, Wi-Fi password, if you open up that laptop on any site in the city, you uh, that we've already deployed stuff, uh, we need to get to tag yet, um, but, uh, you will be on our Wi-Fi network. And it was, uh, a little bit of a pinch, but we managed to get the Wi-Fi installed at the pavilion in time for Autobahn Days. There's still an exterior access point to, uh, go in there, but, uh, it seemed to work well, and we're looking forward to having that for, uh, our Rotary Beer Fest too, so.
So I have a Stephanie question. So I'm looking at addresses on these old Spectrum business builds. Where is East Mill Place or Plaza?
That's the EMS building.
Okay, um, Wreck and Ridge would be Tag. I would assume.
That's correct.
And I'm glad I closed my windows. All right, um, 330 North Walnut Street?
That's the senior center.
Okay. And of course, Kikaski would be the water department.
Correct.
All right, thanks. Holy sholay.
Is that all the questions you have to ask for the finance committee? Okay. Just wanted to ask if you're, if I don't know.
So do you want to?
Bob?
What, I, you want a motion?
So any comments?
Well.
Questions?
I can understand the mess, I can understand the solution necessary, but as you know, if you live in the modern world, you want to aggravate somebody, the first thing you do is ask them about their internet service and who they have, or their phone service and who they have and how it's doing. So I would like it to be a little more, you know, understood, but I, see, if you ask people what bothers them most, their kids, their grandkids, their phone service or their internet service, you're not going to get kids or grandkids on the list. It's a mess. So I'm glad you're on the way to fixing it, it's just, I haven't the council have a little more heads up as you're going along and getting it fixed, I guess, I guess that would be the only thing I would say. Otherwise, good for you for getting it going.
Molly, anything? Any other questions from anyone else?
Why do we need a kiosk at the DPW building?
That's what I pick.
For clock in and out.
For what?
For clock in and out and putting in our hours.
We'll do it on a hand, hand.
No, so we're going, we're going all virtual, that's the proper term now. So everything's on the computer.
And that's all part of the software that we're doing with the, with the payroll, right?
Yes, my, my.
And it was a reused computer from the police department, they wiped it clean, and all it is is for punching in and out. So it didn't.
Okay. So there's three, there's actually three, discuss the possible action IT upgrade, so we're first one was the possible action, the current spectrum phone and internet contract.
Why don't you make a motion to approve that? Why don't you make a motion to approve that?
That's what, that's what I like to do. The current, is it, it's right now.
Motion to approve current contract.
I'll second it.
So, take your role.
Other person Newman.
Aye.
Other person Henkel.
Aye.
Other person Smith.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you, discuss with possible action Microsoft invoice.
So this is a good segue from what Justin was saying. You know, before you had, um, Microsoft, that was just like a, for your email. And now you're going to the premium, business premium license, which will include your office suite. Um, and plus be able to integrate with one computer to another. And so that's what the invoice is, it's, and you could see it February through August, and August was the first month that it took effect. And that's 49 licenses at 2310, so it's a thousand, $1,131.90. Before, what you had was a home and student, and everybody had individual licenses.
Microsoft has been shifting away from those, we used to buy a license and install it.
Oh, yeah.
It lasts a life of your computer, Microsoft's getting away from that, everything's a service now, so, uh, while on paper, in theory, Microsoft does sell the standalone licenses, they do not integrate very well with the 365 ecosystem. Uh, in practice, it causes a lot of headaches and more expenses, labor and support and these sorts of things. So we found it best to go with the, uh, uh, business premium license of 365, because it includes all of your office apps and whatever computer you sit down on and try to use your account with, within the city's, um, um, IT assets, you'll be able to access your files and uh, do everything you, you need to do without, uh, having to worry about, uh, being asked for passwords or tracking multiple accounts and, um, you're being asked for one account to access one data that's stored on one server and another account for your email stored on another server. It's good to have it all in one house and everybody only needs to remember one login and everything's very seamless from the user experience.
And then updates are pushed out automatically?
Yes, updates are pushed out automatically, many of the old licenses are reaching end of life, uh, which is a security concern because they stop patching the software and you become, uh, potentially open to vulnerabilities if, um, hackers out there find ways to pull holes through that sort of thing.
Molly, Bob, any questions?
Good.
Yeah. I have one, what happens if you have a Windows 10 computer at home that you're still using? And, and it's not that compatible with the Lincoln 365 right now, there's a lot of glitches with that.
That's right, they're making it difficult to continue to use Windows 10, so that's kind of what your experience is going to be like, it's going to continue to be more and more difficult to use it. In, in addition, um, you stop getting the security updates, so over time, you will become more and more vulnerable to potential threats.
I'm not worried about my home computer, I'm worried about accessing the city's stuff through my home computer, you know what I mean, my city email, but that's okay. Never mind.
I think accessing your city email will be okay.
How old is your computer at home?
I don't know, the last, it's a, it's a
It's a Commodore 64.
I was gonna say.
No, he's got to get back to the green screen, the green screen. Sorry.
Love you, Bob Smith. Uh, discuss with possible action Microsoft invoice, so we're just, I'm gonna make a motion, then, because we're just gonna continually upgrade that, um, and that's 49 computers on the city.
49 users.
Users, okay.
So we pay per user?
That's right.
Okay. Go Gates, God bless you. Uh, make a motion.
I'll second it.
Second that one, all right. Not God bless you, the Bill Gates, but the Microsoft invoice, thank you. I'll take your role, please.
Other person Newman.
Aye.
Other person Henkel.
Aye.
Other person Smith.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Now we're in discuss the possible action update from Windows 10, the third, 11. So we are, you said Stephanie, the, the computers obviously have to be replaced, because it's going to go from 10 to 11, and you're not going to be compatible. And there's going to be a bunch of, yeah.
So ones that are hard to handle, we're getting.
You're going to deal with the heartache that you came in the city with, with the patch and those little Band-Aids and figure, trying to get, keep the water from splashing out of the, behind the dam. I understand, and what a night, thank you for helping us out, getting us off the track, and Stephanie, thanks for helping us out in good faith and ease a transferred service, appreciate it. Do we have to put this in the budget?
Either way, it's October 1.
Yeah.
Um, I, I, you're over budget already on the IT project?
Right.
That's what I was thinking, that we should just wait January 1.
How much is it going to cost, you know?
That's a, yeah, what are we gonna, what's the way to go, desktop, laptop, what?
Usually desktop, you're going to get better performance per your, per dollar and more longevity, modular parts that are easy to service and replace if you need upgrades or repairs down the road. So, if we're just replacing a tower, we have a few business model options that range from $600 to $1,200. The sweet spot in there is about $800, $900, best bang for your buck if you want to get a good life out of it. We have switched away from using the Texas processors that Microsoft seems to be flagging for incompatibleity with Windows 11 and future versions. They will be pulling this sort of trick again, I am certain. So, we've switched to using ones that we, we are very hopeful stay off their radar and do not get flagged as incompatible, hopefully a longer life out of these machines than they give the other ones, so.
Is this stuff solid state or is it going to be the old fashioned spinning hard drives?
All solid state.
So, what's the ballpark number?
Um, ballpark, I'd say 850, right in the middle for each individual PC. So, multiply that by, I'm sorry, did we say 11 that we needed to upgrade? So...
We'll just start at 11.
Make a motion that we obviously put that in the budget upgrade.
I'll second it.
All right. Take your role.
Alderperson Newman?
Aye.
Alderperson Henkel?
Aye.
Alderperson Smith?
Aye.
Motion carries.
I'm on number five.
I'll make a motion.
I second that. All in favor? Aye. All right. Adjourned. Thank you. So, I ask. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, you're up.
I'll to order the personnel committee meeting September 22, 2025, 8:19.
Alderperson Henkel, here. Alderperson Olson, here. Alderperson Leitnau. Motion for persons present.
Number two, approval of the minutes of the August 25 personnel committee meeting.
I'll make that motion in 20 minutes for the August 25, 25 personnel.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any citizen comments for personnel? Seeing none. Number four, discuss with possible actions. Discuss with possible actions, separation paid for Department of Public Works Director Jack Hurst. Retirement date, September 2, 2025.
This is just the payout for Jack who has been separating after 25 years of service and for vacation is sick leave, testing policies and the employee handbook that is owed to him. Dawn and I and Stephanie, oh, no.
This is a little different situation because he was employed before 2011 and an employee handbook addresses that they paid out.
Yeah, for sick, if retiring, the payout is 100% of their sick time and the maximum is... Oh, yeah, sick retirement is 1,200 now.
Hours.
1,200 hours.
All right, is there a motion to approve?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Should we take the role?
I can, yeah. Alderperson Leitnau?
Aye.
Alderperson Olson?
Aye.
Alderperson Henkel?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Four B, discuss with possible action, separation paid for Department of Public Works Employee Jen Struick. Retirement date, September 2, 2025.
And he has the same, well, he had been here 24 hours, 3 months, but he was still before 10 as well with Jack.
Is there a motion to approve?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Take the role, please.
Alderperson Leitnau?
Aye.
Alderperson Olson?
Aye.
Alderperson Henkel?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Number five, do we have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn at 8:23.
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
This is theirs.
Yeah. Last one.
All right. Special conference committee, now order at 8:24. Please take your role.
Alderperson Baker?
Here.
Alderperson Smith?
Here.
Alderperson Henkel?
Here.
Alderperson Leitnau?
Present.
Alderperson Newman?
Here.
Alderperson Olson?
Here.
We have form.
Excuse the comments. The non-discussible possible action, approve the minutes of September 8, 2025. Common counsel, your motion?
Motion, second.
Motion, aye. Motion by Newman, second by Leitnau. Any corrections or additions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Discuss the possible action, 6013-2025. Resolution appointing designated officer, officer for judicial privacy protection requests.
So, state legislature passed Wisconsin Act 25, Section 12, which requires all municipalities to appoint a designated officer to handle judicial privacy protection requests. These requests allow judicial officers and their families to, for protection of certain personal information from public disclosure for security and privacy reasons. And then we got notice through the league that the director of the state of courts has requested that each municipality identify and report its designated officer by October 3, which is why this is here right now. I'm suggesting that you approve the resolution. It would appoint me as the, that officer as I already handle open records requests. I believe it will help just streamline any of these.
I will make that motion.
I'll second that motion. All right. Motion by Smith, second by the Baker. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Discuss the possible action, resolution 6014-2025. Resolution for the 2025 budget amendment.
That would be Nicole Schepf with John Wild.
The, so this is the donation of $25,000 from Takes Center Inc. Was budgeted in 2025 budget under the Aquatics Supplies Account. Takes Center Inc. has requested to purchase a new step cross trainer valued at $5,000 with the donated funds. In order to complete it, the funds will need to be transferred from the fitness account. There is sufficient funds in the Aquatics Supplies Account to transfer $5,000 for the purchase of the cross trainer fitness equipment. So, more than anything, just to, yeah, transfer the $5,000 from aquatics to the fitness so we can...
I'll make that motion.
I'll second that.
Motion by six. Smith, second by Newman. Any more discussion? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, discuss the possible action, the allocation guidelines for the Donatorial Relief Fund. This was left over that last couple months.
Yeah. I put together something that I am hoping will be helpful for you. It is the current breakdowns applications we've received. 22 applications so far, 18 are from within the tornado area, 4 are outside that area. Not everyone gave their claim amounts, but on the second page, it kind of got some statistics or numbers going for you to show you where the more requested losses are, such as insurance deductibles. We received no applications for people being displaced. I did kind of have an outlier. You'll notice the numbers for household loss outside of the tornado zone. We kind of had an outlier where someone claimed $15,000 in loss. But other than that, you know, I tried to lay out some potential options. That's my second or back to the first page. Proportional distribution by claim type. Do you want to prioritize to the torn, tornado impact zone? You could cap certain categories. You could just give a flat amount out to everyone, do a hybrid approach. Since we do still have quite a bit of time for applications to come in, that's part of the reason I gave you the percentages. You know, in case you want to say out of our donated funds, if we're just looking inside the tornado zone, 61% goes to insurance deductibles. And then whoever claims within that, we split it evenly between them and do that for all the various categories. So, I did give you percentages to see where all of that falls. Also, adding the numbers up, you can see the amount being requested by people is in excess of $71,000. We have about $28,000 to give out. So, no one's going to be made whole by this.
What are the reasons for the outside of tornado zone?
Thank you. I thought you already agreed that we're, we have a...
It was just on the map. So, I didn't know what applications I got in first.
Okay.
Just to give you the statistics of what's been received.
Okay.
I think if it's outside the tornado zone, there would still be tornado losses over.
Because of wind damage or hail?
That is up to you to decide if you want them in the...
I think it was outside the map.
If it's outside the map, they shouldn't...
Because then it's a tornado versus hail versus, you know, it's...
Well, you just put this all together too, right? But you, I mean, that's what they put in.
And right now...
Outside the zone that we, we determine that, but inside the zone is where obviously we want to...
Yeah, this is simply just in...
This is you just giving us a...
Info I've collected to point.
This is, uh, this is tornado life for dummies by Andy.
I wouldn't go that far.
So many numbers.
I go that far. Come on.
And you insurance deductibles was going to be a baby.
Mm-hmm. And additionally, we do not yet have the caveat that they have to show proof. So, if that is implemented and people have to provide proof of these losses or proof of the deductibles, these numbers I guess would change. There's no verification.
I think at this point, if you had a deductible that you had to provide insurance, you would probably already have cut them check early.
And some people have given us backups. Some haven't. It's just, it's a little all over the board right now.
Not everybody's claims have been processed yet.
Yep, there were, I have about eight people saying they will have amounts. They just don't know what they are.
But they should have already cut their check for insurance?
No.
No.
We didn't have, get ours yet from the city.
Well, then, I guess, do you think?
The roads is holding themselves.
Do you think that they should actually show some kind of a proof for...
Absolutely, yeah.
Did everybody in agreement?
Yes.
Yeah.
I agree with that. All right. So, we're in agreement on that. What about the outside of the map? Do you think people should get money to live outside the area?
No.
No, that's...
I think the map is fungible. I think if it's deemed, I mean, I'm, I'm okay myself, but I know a lot of people who had tornado damage who were not in our defined map. I mean, it's obvious the trees were turned upside down. But that's up to you. If their, if their insurance company, if their claim filed, if they claim is bound to be a valid tornado damage claim, how can we, how can we determine that they're not within the...
And the very few we've got from outside of the area, all four did claim insurance deductibles. Two claimed household loss and household losses that are covered by insurance. So, that's probably the harder to prove.
Yeah.
Ellen?
So, you do say no outside the area. Kim, Molly, what do you think?
We already specified that we had a...
Map.
A map. So, I'm sticking with that.
I say we stay inside the map.
Tony?
Yeah, I'm in a struggle with this one because these people have damage too. But we did agree on the map originally, so.
Right.
It'll be compatible with the new sign...
All right, so I think we're on a map. All right. Then the next thing is, do we want to do a, do we want to do a straight, flat amount or do we want to do a hybrid approach? Hybrid approach, meaning we have a point system of which one more priority?
You can prioritize some. You can, like I had said, say X amount of percentage of donated funds will go to this category. And then when they come in, it just, the numbers fall where the numbers fall. Coming here or today.
It might be better on a percentage basis because when it goes, this is going to go into CBA.
Mm-hmm.
Because then if you had a percentage in it, it would be easier for them just to, okay, this is how much money we have and distributed, this is how many people we have.
These are all qualifying applications.
Right. I go, uh...
22 applications so far, 18 within the tornado. And we still have both of these if they could come in.
So, that's what we have to decide.
Did, did we put a cap on this? Or is it just that we talked about?
I think we just talked about that.
Just discuss the formal action.
All right. I don't know why, but I got 500 in my head.
We, we did say like originally, you get 500, you get 500, you get 500.
Okay.
Just makes it easy and fair.
So, is that what we want to do?
It's hard to divvy up that way, though. You know what I mean? It's hard to land on final number and make sure it all gets dispersed. I do the percentages, then everybody gets, gets the money.
Right.
And you empty the account, it's done.
Right. I agree with the first one.
So, if you look at the, the top table on that second sheet.
Inside tornado zone.
Inside tornado zone and that is where the percentages fall currently. I don't know if you want to put some into house, into actual displacement. We have had no claims of that. And to my knowledge, I believe there's only, there's one individual who was displaced in the city.
School's free.
And to point they haven't come.
I'm surprised, but you know what? Maybe the right problem.
But it could fall on, it could fall under insurance deductible as well.
Yeah. I would say 60, 60% for insurance deductible, 20% for tree replacement, tree removal and 20% for household loss.
You want tree replacement removal treated similarly?
So, 60, 20, 20. Anybody have any other thoughts?
I'm, I'm all for helping with tree removal. But tree replacement, I don't know. I'm not for that.
Okay.
You're not for what?
Tree replacement.
I'm, I'm for tree removal. Just me though.
And looking at, at the averages, claim tree removal obviously is a lot more costly than the tree replacement. Incorrect.
Ken, you want tree re, the tree replacement to be part of this?
Both, yeah.
Leaving all?
We've got three trees too in the city.
About three.
Not even one, 50%.
50%.
There you go.
And we just come to trees.
50% of what?
But that's only in the front yard.
Okay.
Kim, what do you think? We owe 15 for removal and five for...
Well, let's go with leaving all. We haven't made any decision here.
Negotiating here.
I guess we just keep both of them.
Both?
Molly?
I'm not replacement.
All right, Bob?
I'm not a fan of replacement. They all grow up to be problems.
Okay, what more do you, the Baker?
Yeah, take it out.
All right, take it out. All right.
So, the 20 would go to tree removal? And we're not on the tree removal?
Or do you want to redo your numbers? You might want to do a number, do a number. What is 60, 40 or 70, 30 or...
It's a 10-year thing.
For 33 to 30.
Right, 66, 33?
I mean...
What about 70, 30?
Okay, 70, 30 is on the table. You guys good with that?
I'm good with that.
There's still three different categories. So there's tree removal, insurance deductible, household loss.
But I thought we... Oh.
Because tree removal was separate from tree removal.
Yeah, yeah.
Alright, so we have three. So we have three. So you wanted to beat up the 60, 20, 20, or...
Perfect.
20, 20, looks good.
Alright, 60, 20, 20, we're all in agreement?
Yeah, 60, 20, 20.
Alright. So I guess we're good then.
Yeah, let's make financial decisions when, when we've been here two hours and everybody's getting silly.
Well, we've been making financial decisions, we've brought up for the last three, four months.
Oh my gosh.
So what I will do is, I will...
Have a closure.
I will...
Have a closure.
The 15th of October. I will send mailings to those who have already applied and ask them to provide proof of their loss so that it can be reviewed at the October CBA meeting. And I'll give them that deadline, then I will make sure to update anything on Facebook that indicates they need to include that proof of loss. And we will let them know when they come and offer comments.
So the cutoff is October 30?
15.
15.
Alright, so if someone needs to make a motion, then you want to paraphrase the motion?
Absolutely. So the motion would be that the donated funds are being...
Allocated.
Allocated on a percentage basis. 60% going to insurance deductible, 20% to household loss, 20% to tree removal. They will be spread out evenly across all approved applicants. They must be within the designated tornado area on the map. And they must submit proof of their loss in order to be considered.
Okay.
Okay, I'll make the motion.
Motion by Henkel?
Second.
And by leaving all? Any more discussion? Well, I'd like to thank Annie for putting this together, it's great.
Thank you.
And the council for...
Yep.
Working, working with the citizens here for four, five, six months, we haven't been doing this all, so. Appreciate it. Alright, let's take your role.
Elder Person Henkel?
Aye.
Elder Person Leebnau?
Aye.
Elder Person Newman?
Aye.
Elder Person Olson?
Aye.
Elder Person Baker?
Aye.
Elder Person Smith?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Alright, discuss with possible action, Microsoft invoice. Your motion?
Motion.